The January seventeen, two thousand and twenty-three session of the Anarundale County Council is called to order. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. Ms. Hummer?
Good evening. Tonight Apostle Antonio Palmer from Kingdom Celebration Center will be providing our invocation. Kingdom Celebration Center is formerly a District Four congregation, is now a District Five, but many of their ministries are in District Four. So we are very happy to have Apostle Palmer here tonight.
Please rise.
Thank you. First, I would just like to say a good evening to everyone that's here, our special council, and congratulations to all the newcomers that are here on this evening. And thank you, Council Chair Pete Smith for having me, and Councilwoman Julie Hummer. Shall we pray? Lord God of heaven and earth, we come before your throne of grace to invoke your presence into this assembly. We need your wisdom and your guidance from above as we conduct the affairs of this county on behalf of all its residents. Our decisions are critical and must be made in the best interest of every citizen. Let us not forget those who are downtrodden, the disenfranchised, the underrepresented, and the underserved, the poor, and those who've been victims of a flawed system. Help us tonight to be the agents of effective, positive change and agents of goodwill. Lord, reveal to us that enemy of justice, equality, and an equitable society, that he may be overthrown by the power of love, goodness, and fairness. Remind us that what we do is about people and not about a political party. Let us work hand in hand with our county executive to achieve that ambitious, God-given agenda of safe, healthy, thriving, and educated communities, and a responsive government that we can hold accountable to making our county the best place for all. Out of your good nature, prosper our county, bless our council, and give our constituents hope and a promising future. Our Father and our God, this is our prayer. Amen. And amen. Thank you.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form, review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at four ten two 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 four four one three.
This is now the section where we open up our council chamber invitation to the audience. Madam Secretary, did we receive any comments through the online from members of the public?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we did receive two comments. However, in speaking to those individuals, they actually wanted to sign up to testify this evening. So I have transferred that information to the other signup sheet. However, that information was posted online because I didn't know that early enough today.
We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Your remarks will be limited to two minutes. So will the following persons please come up to the table, take a seat, and state your name and address for the record. Mr. Hugh Hayes and Brian Konkoski.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, there are two other names as well that I didn't realize. Actually, three. There also was Tracy Gill and Susan Dabkounis. They were the two individuals on the other sheet this evening, and also Sandy Gelrod.
Can those three individuals please come to the table if you're in the audience? And so what was your name? I'm sorry. Okay, just wanted to make sure. So Brian Konkoski, is he still in the audience or not here? All right, Mr. Hayes, please state your name and address for the record.
Hugh Hayes, three one three Chesapeake Avenue, Annapolis, Maryland, two one four oh three.
Go ahead.
So I wanted to talk to you today about finishing the BNA trail into Annapolis. Currently, the BNA trail stops about two miles short of downtown Annapolis at Bolters Way, where it goes from a beautiful wide shared-use path into the shoulder of Richey Highway with cars traveling fifty to sixty miles per hour, three feet away from you, with only a thin white line of paint separating you from the cars. I have two small kids, and I would love to bike with them from downtown Annapolis into the BNA trail, but the current path is not safe for them at all, so instead we have to drive the trail. Thanks to the amazing progress the county has made on building out a safe trail network, in just a couple of years, there'll be a continuous safe shared-use path going through most of the county. The South Shore Trail will be completed linking Odenton to Parole. The Popular Trail will be completed linking Parole to Annapolis. And the county and the state recently added a project linking Annapolis to the Naval Academy Bridge with a new shared-use path. But there will be a two-mile gap from over the Naval Academy Bridge to the current end of the BNA trail at Bolters Way, where you're riding in the shoulder of a fifty mile an hour highway. As I understand today, there's no current project in the pipeline to finish the BNA trail from its current end at Bolters Way to the Annapolis side of the Naval Academy Bridge. I know this type of project will take years to get done. If we don't start planning for it today, in a couple of years, when the rest of this amazing trail network is completed, and we're going to be left with a two-mile gap in the network that is not accessible to all ages and abilities, severely limiting the full potential of the network that the county has invested so much money in. Please finish the BNA trail today, and let's start planning for it today. Thanks.
Thank you. Tracy Gill.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Hi, my name is Tracy Gill, and I live in Annapolis at thirteen ninety-seven Stone Creek Road. I'm here today to talk about the use of the newly acquired land at Quiet Waters Park. I'm opposed to Chesapeake Conservancy building a new two-story building for private use in this park with an almost free public land lease. I'll also comment on the lack of transparency and inclusion in the planning of this apparent quid pro quo deal. I often walk with friends at Quiet Waters Park. We love that much of the park is undeveloped, and we can enjoy nature in a quiet place. I was thrilled about the nineteen-acre park addition. Kudos to Mr. Pittman, Ms. Rodbien, Chesapeake Conservancy, and all who worked to buy this land, and especially the taxpayers who paid for it. However, it isn't right to reward the Conservancy with an unprecedented deal to build a newly constructed private office building in a public park with a lease for a dollar a year. Mr. Pittman and Ms. Rodbien recently suggested, "Don't be concerned. The building footprint is small. Most of the land is still available to the public." But many of us are really concerned. The building footprint is not the point. There should not be any new construction of private buildings allowed in our parks, or they will lose their very essence. My second point is the lack of transparency and inclusion on this deal. There was little public awareness or outreach that I saw. It appears the planners did not want public input, and apparently little to none of the input from the public or friends of Quiet Waters Park was incorporated into the plans. The council must start being transparent and inclusive in all development plans. Bring these projects to the public before plans are even sketched. Engage the community. Yes, it will be messy, but you will get a better outcome. Council, make this right. Do not set this terrible precedence of allowing new construction of a private office building in a public park. Rather, allow the Conservancy to lease other county land, perhaps at Crownsville. Alda Leopold said, "The oldest task in human history is to live on a piece of land without spoiling it." Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Dabkounis.
You got it. And I live at six ten Tame and Drive, Annapolis, Maryland, two one four zero three. Good evening. My name, as I said, is Susan Dabkounis. I have lived in Annapolis most of my life, and was one of the people who, after many months of struggle, were finally allowed to be on the planning committee for what would become Quiet Waters Park. People said then that the county was saving the land from development, but we had to fight development within the park in order for you to enjoy the park the way it is today. I have many questions about the proposed development of the newly acquired land known as the Retreat. Some are as follows: Who paid for the thirty percent design and all of the testing, and at what cost? This was done without the taxpayers' knowledge. The Chesapeake Conservancy is called a nonprofit, but won't it essentially be gaining a private office building where people won't be welcome on one of the most beautiful, peaceful spots of the Chesapeake Bay? Wouldn't it be better for this nonprofit to help the Earl family leave a truly environmental legacy to the people of Anarundale County and beyond by using the land at Crownsville, which the county executive so wisely acquired for that exact purpose? Doesn't this situation remind you of the child who would rather ask for forgiveness than permission? County officials must have known that the taxpayers would never have wanted this plan. You all work so hard. You sit on the county council because your constituents thought you were environmentalists who swore to stop the old-style banana republic back-room dealings. Many people feel shocked and betrayed, but this is not a done deal. The work of your constituents has just begun. We have the alternative plans you seek. Come to the Annapolis Neck Peninsula Federation Meeting this Friday from six to eight p.m. at the Bay Ridge Christian Church on Bay Ridge Avenue, and share with us your thoughts and get the thoughts of your constituents. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sandy Gelrod?
Forest Hill Drive in Hillsmere, Annapolis. I just wanted to reiterate what these women said. I'm here to speak my opposition to the development of Quiet Waters Retreat. I've lived on Forest Hill Drive for forty years. I was there before it was a park, when it was Quiet Waters Farm, and there was corn growing on the other side of my backyard. Anything I'd say would just be repetitive of what they're saying, but I will say that there are twelve hundred-plus homes in Hillsmere, probably over two thousand adults. I would venture to say that probably one hundred percent of us are opposed to this development that has been proposed. We don't like the lack of transparency. We don't like the whole idea of it, of two new paved parking lots, paving over the dog park parking lot, which nobody has any problems with as it exists now, a new road with public access being cut through to this piece of property, the temporary use of an entrance just up from where I live for construction vehicles and emergency vehicles, and possibly in the future as a public access. We just feel it's a very bad idea, a very bad use of the property to have a private office building on a public property. The Conservancy has forty employees. There's going to be just seven offices in the building, and it's going to disrupt the lives of hundreds and hundreds of people who live in that community, to say nothing of the additional traffic on Forest Drive, which is already a problem. That's it. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You all can go back to your seats. Thank you for your testimony today. No problem. It's our job. Is there anyone else here who now wishes to speak? Please come up to the table, state your name, address, and your topic before making your remarks. Anyone else from the audience who did not sign up previously that would like to, please come up, sir.
My name is John Griffiths, four thirteen Duval Lane, Hillsmere. I can only reiterate what my neighbors had said back here. For me, it was a complete surprise. I don't pay attention to a lot of the news. I don't get the evening capital. Then one day I get this notice that, my gosh, they're going to put an office complex on this piece of property, and I don't know if you folks have ever been out there. It is the most pristine piece of property in Quiet Waters Park. One of the reasons it's been like that or is like that is because it's undeveloped. The place where they're going to locate this building, in the evening, if you walk out there, it is loaded with deer. They bed in those grasses. When you go out, sometimes twelve, thirteen. There's maybe a bald eagle's nest, certainly an osprey's nest to the right. All I can say is that it's a shame that the building of the garage collapsed and that somebody vandalized the old building, and I understand the Conservancy wanted to use those buildings as their offices. If that's the truth, then why couldn't they use the same footprint of the garage, the four-bay garage, as a basis for their complex? As you walk out to that piece of property from the gate in Hillsmere, you make a slight left-hand turn to go where the old property was, instead of going to the park, the dog park. You look out there, you see the South River. The only thing that's in the way is trees. If this complex is built, the only thing you'll see is the building. Aside from that, well, I'm sorry, to the right, there'll be the forest and the views of the South River, but you'll see the building. Why in God's name is that building put on the most pristine part of that piece of property? Why not pull it back closer to the gate, closer to the entrance, so that people can get access to the other side of where that building is supposed to be?
Can you summarize, sir?
Excuse me?
Can you summarize?
Well, all I can say is that the lack of transparency seems to me to be an issue. I remember when the park was developed, and Mary Parker was forced to give the property to the park. The sixteen or nineteen acres was given to her, I guess, until she passed away and transferred title to someone else. From that point on, it's like there was some kind of, I wouldn't say game going on, but some kind of transfer of property that wasn't exactly clear.
Thank you.
Maybe it's illegal, certainly not illegal, but...
Definitely appreciate your testimony, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other audience member who would like to testify? All right, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution amendment to a bill, or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of January third, two thousand and twenty-three.
The county council meeting was called to order by Vice Chair Pickard at seven p.m. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Pickard and was followed by the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of January third, two thousand and twenty-three?
Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of January third, two thousand and twenty-three stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number three twenty-three, an ordinance concerning zoning small business districts, religious facilities. Bill number four twenty-three, an ordinance concerning current expense budget Board of Education supplementary appropriation and transfer of funds. Bill number five twenty-three, an ordinance concerning current expense budget supplementary appropriations, Cattail Creek and Upper Magathie River Waterways Improvement District Grants Special Revenue Fund. Bill number six twenty-three, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, zoning, accessory dwelling units.
I understand there's no resolutions to be introduced this evening?
That is correct.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number eighty-nine twenty-two.
Bill number eighty-nine twenty-two, an ordinance concerning capital budget and program Board of Education security-related upgrades, maintenance backlog, roof replacement, and upgrade various schools' capital projects supplementary appropriations.
This is an administration bill. Now have the administration come up to speak to this bill.
Good evening. I'm Hannah Dyer, Director of Fiscal Affairs, here to discuss bill eighty-nine twenty-two. And joining me at the table are Naomi McAllister from the Budget Office, Kyle Roof from AACPS, and Lori Blair-Klasmyer from Office of Law. So this bill was discussed at last week's work session, and it appropriates just over three million to the Board of Education for various capital projects. With that, if you have any questions, we are happy to answer them, and we request your support.
Any questions from the council on bill eighty-nine twenty-two? For the record, for those that weren't in attendance, we have a monthly work session for the general public as well. During that work session is when we usually go in-depth into a lot of this legislation, hear from some of the experts, as well as the sponsors, the administration on this bill. So if you don't hear us sort of have dialogue here, it's because we more than likely had that dialogue on Tuesday discussing this piece of legislation. All right. No questions from the council. We will now open the public hearing on bill number eighty-nine twenty-two. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through our online forum from members of the public?
We did not receive anything, Mr. Chair.
No one signed up. Anyone would like to speak on bill eighty-nine twenty-two from the public? Wish they all were this easy. Okay, the public hearing on bill number eighty-nine twenty-two is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number eighty-nine twenty-two.
Bill number eighty-nine twenty-two, an ordinance concerning capital budget and program Board of Education security-related upgrades, maintenance backlog, roof replacement, and upgrade various schools' capital projects supplementary appropriations.
Any further discussion from the council? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill eighty-nine twenty-two.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number eighty-nine twenty-two has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number ninety twenty-two.
Bill number ninety twenty-two, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, adequate public school facilities, school utilization chart.
All right, Ms. Fiedler. As you were. That's a military term. I immediately knew that it was a different name once I saw her expression that was on Mrs. Fiedler's face, so I definitely apologize. I had my page flipped over to ninety-two twenty-two, not ninety twenty-two. So, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see everybody tonight. Joining me at the table for ninety dash twenty-two, or sticking with us at the table, is Mr. Roof and Ms. Lori Blair-Klasmyer. Joining us from AACPS is Mr. Greg Stewart, and from Office of Planning and Zoning, Christine Duval. This bill was also discussed at last week's work session. I think it was a very good discussion. We all, I think, recognize the need to reform the county code as it comes to our school utilization chart. However, this bill, our code still requires this bill. Ninety twenty-two approves the twenty twenty-four school utilization chart based on projected enrollment rates in the coming years to determine open or close for the development status for APF purposes of our school feeder systems. This is based on whether schools are projected to reach a certain percentage of their state-rated capacities. Again, these charts are based on projections for future school years. And just to remind folks watching in our discussion at the work group, over the past two years, Office of Planning and Zoning has led a school adequate public facilities work group consisting of county and school system professionals and members of the council. The work group has gathered data, reviewed our code and other jurisdictions' approaches, and met with experts. This council will hear from us over the next several months as this group is preparing its recommendations to reform many aspects of our county code, including how this school chart is issued. The administration recognizes the chart before you can be better, more timely, and more accurately project enrollments, that we must improve our code to make sure this chart better informs county planning professionals, our school system, the development community, our communities, and parents. We will continue to work with the Office of Planning and Zoning and our partners at the Board of Education to reform and improve our APF process. We do ask that you pass this bill tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions. I just, for the sake of the listening public, it's important to note that while the school utilization chart is what it is based on our code, the school system and this council, well, the school system is going to be undergoing and is starting the process for a pretty comprehensive redistricting, which is going to greatly impact the school utilization and projections that are noted in this chart, as well as this council has aggressively funded some school construction that's also going to pretty seriously impact the utilization numbers between now and twenty twenty-four that are on this chart. So I appreciate Mr. Barron's comments. He recapped the work session very nicely, so I won't do that tonight. But I look forward to working collaboratively to get a school utilization chart that better tells the story of what's happening here in the county with the use of our schools. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pickard. Any other councilmen's?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So when we were in the work session, I asked questions regarding Oak Hill Elementary, and then had a subsequent community meeting just two nights after that. And I did share some of the information regarding their school current enrollment with them, and there were some members of the school system, or school families, in that meeting, and they indicated that they feel or seem to understand that they are a hundred students over enrollment. But the chart that Ms. Hummer and Ms. Pickard so kindly shared has them at eighty-nine percent currently enrolled. I just want to make sure. There could be, and I want to acknowledge, there could be some confusion in what they were sharing. I just want to confirm here on the record.
I'm going to turn it over to our experts at the school system. So the chart produced did not take into account the twenty twenty-two September enrollments. And so at that time, I don't have the September enrollments unless you do in front of you.
Greg Stewart, for the record, Public Schools. The official enrollments that we have, again, the nine thirty, we have at six hundred and fourteen at Oak Hill. According to the state-rated capacity, it is six hundred and eighty-three.
Okay.
And keep in mind, the chart that's before you is not current enrollments. It's two-year projected. So if people look at the chart, it's not going to coincide with what the numbers are today. So that's something that people have to understand.
Yes. Mr. Chair, may I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, please.
So that two years out, just to confirm for the record, for the public, when you say twenty twenty-four school year, that's twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You know, one of the interesting pieces of information, and I think Ms. Pickard will probably sort of go deep dive into this over the coming months. She's probably been one of the closest ones, and maybe even Ms. Hummer here, with the school utilization. I think it's one of the things that they're really sort of trying to address. And what I found interesting out of this whole process is, and I definitely want the public to be aware of this, is, one, a couple of things I believe needs to happen. One, the real-time sort of, or as close as possible to utilization of data instead of using two-year-old data and then making projections off of two-year-old data about something that's going to happen two years from now. So almost like a four-year gap there, three, four-year gap there between, that you're making these sort of commitments to. And it impacts our ability to sort of, you know, govern to some extent and create an inventory of housing. And what folks don't know is the APF standards, and this is a part of that. It's just one cog in the master wheel of governing when it comes to utilization of the school, when it comes to the housing stock that we have, when it comes to our county budget, so on and so forth. And so the better in line, this isn't me sort of being critical of anything, it's just more of a statement of, and I certainly want the public to understand, that this is a very complicated issue and one that has significant impacts to our county and to our budget. And so I'm interested in us, you know, deep diving into this further so that every year we're not voting on a, you know, two-year-old snapshot that's projecting four years from then of what's going to happen to our school system. And so it seems sort of backwards in my mind when we're making these projections to some extent. But it's based off of what we, if it's what we have, I totally understand that. But I just wanted to say that. Any other comments or questions about APF standard? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So since I started voting against these in twenty-nineteen and raised this issue about the timing, I'm really happy to hear that we're going to fix it. I have a bill that I worked on for the better part of two years when Mr. Shaknovich was in his position, circulated it, went through the admin, and I held off on it, I told Mr. Barron I wasn't going to wag my finger tonight, but, but, so I won't wag, but, but I did hold off on it because there was some discussion that there was the school APF group that was working, and that they were going to come out with a comprehensive strategy on how to fix this, not just with the timing, but also with the calculation of seats, et cetera, which is great, so I'm looking forward to this grand compromise that we can hopefully get to, but one of the pieces I do think is vitally important is what Mr. Smith raised, which has always been my concern about dating back to twenty-nineteen, the timing, I think it's really about eighteen-month-old data, that's what we're really voting on, and it's always bothered me because I think there's a really easy cut point, which is somewhere around November, December, we have a pretty solid idea of what the school capacity and the school enrollment is, but then there are some other things that have to happen where the data goes to the state, and it comes back down, and there are sort of like quadruple checks that have to happen. And the reality is, if I understood it correctly from Mr. Shaknovich back in the day, I don't want to use his name in vain, but usually Anarundel County does a pretty good job of getting their stuff straight, and there aren't a lot of edits that come back from the state, because the state has to check all the jurisdictions and sort of cross-reference, this student is not enrolled in Howard and Anarundel, or Prince George is in Anarundel. And so once they say that, then they know for the state funding formulas where people are going, so I have that bill, while we're sitting up here, I forwarded it to Mr. Bennett, who had not been involved in this before, because Ms. Schuet was our legislative council, and I said, let's take another look at this, so that may be coming down the line. I'm going to go with you tonight on this, I don't like voting on this, I don't like voting on bad data, but giving the administration the benefit of the doubt on this, let's see if we can try to fix these timing issues going forward, so that, that's just my piece, and, Mr. Stewart, I, go ahead, please.
If I, if I may. Because some of you were here last year when I, when I presented the, the open-close chart, and this, this came up, and, and I made you a promise that I would provide that data the day after the board approved it, and I did. You'll see on the footnote on this chart, it was dated June second, we are now seven months and about a week later, and I agree with you, it's old data, but we did everything in our power to provide it to Planning and Zoning, who would, we would have hoped would have sent it to you in the summer or even in June, and the data would be the best available information, because again, this nice little master plan that we prepare every single year, takes in consideration state-rated capacity, actual enrollments, it looks at development, so we try to update it every year to get the best available number
Yeah.
that people can make a decision on. And I'll make you the promise again, we're talking less than five months, we'll have the new data, and certainly, let's say, let's go for June, and let's do a new chart, you guys have the ability to do it, and again, the day after that board, our board approves the numbers, we have the chart ready to go. Basically, my pencils go down in May, and in May, because I've got to get to print, but we're required under state law to have this to the state by July first, and, and we make that commitment.
Thank you for doing what you said you would do, and I'm sure Mr. Barron is noting all of this, so maybe the admin can work on that, thank you.
Ms. Hummer?
Yes, and I just, I echo everything, I had my frustrations with this chart dating back to my time on the Board of Education, and I think we all agree, and we're having great discussions on how to improve it. I also want to stress that the school system's hands are tied based on what we have in the code, so they create, they give us the data based on what we have in there, and so it's, it's a large part in our hands about to do changes, this is not the school system holding things back, it's what we have currently as our processes, so I hope we'll all work together to improve this moving forward and more accurately reflecting what's going on, thank you.
Ms. Pickard?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to put fun at my colleague, you might want to watch the work session from Tuesday, there was a lot of information since you were not here, but I, I can, Julie, Ms. Hummer said similar what I was going to say, is, is this is, this chart is something that's in our code, and it relates to our policies, the school system's education facilities master plan is something they use for their purposes, and so we don't, we are, we have the ability to choose the data we're going to use to create the chart we use for our policies that relate to school APFO, so I look forward to working with my colleague to my right here, and I'll take a look at your bill, but you might want to watch the work session from last week. Thank you.
And for the record, and this is just for general knowledge, if that piece of legislation didn't pass, you guys resort back to the previously one that was issued before, what, how does that work?
Well, first off, Public Schools has no say in development in this county, we don't review and approve anything. All we do is we provide the data, it's up to Planning and Zoning to approve subdivisions, vest subdivisions.
But if this specific piece of legislation didn't pass?
Basically, basically, it's, it stays the old bill.
Correct.
And it stays in, you know, again, it's happened before where it took a year and a half to get a new bill, and that old one stays until you, until the council votes on a new bill. There is an interim chart per the code that Planning and Zoning puts together, so the way the law reads, the, the interim chart basically is supposed to be out on May and September.
Understood.
There is one from September that came out.
Okay.
That's supposed to basically account for development, basically be invested, if there were so many seats available and development got approved, it's supposed to subtract the seats from the approved bill by county council, and that's how the law reads.
Any additional questions from the council? Ms. Pickard?
No, I just wanted to, as much as I don't like this chart, I don't, I need, I think it needs to pass, because if we revert to the previous chart, that's even older data, we can at least, we can at least update our school utilization based on twenty-twenty-one data, not, not leaving it at twenty-nineteen data.
Agreed.
Thank you.
All right, we will now open the public hearing on bill number ninety twenty-two. Is there anyone from the audience, Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through our online forum for members of the public?
We did not receive anything, Mr. Chair.
Anyone signed up, or anyone from the public that would like to testify? Seeing none. Anyone wishes to speak on this bill? Definitely seeing none, none again, all right, so the public hearing on bill number ninety twenty-two is now closed, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number ninety twenty-two.
Bill number ninety twenty-two, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, adequate public school facilities, school utilization chart.
Any further discussion on bill number ninety twenty-two?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five, I, I do agree with a lot of what my colleague said here this evening, I know I've pointed out one school in particular in District Five, but there are other examples, I do acknowledge that we are at the point where the council, all seem like we're on the same page, the administration seems like they're on the same page, where I have previously voted against this bill because of my frustration that we weren't making progress on a new type of chart, I'm hopeful that we will get this done before the next school utilization chart, so I will support this bill this evening with that understanding, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number ninety twenty-two.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, bill number ninety twenty-two has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number ninety-one twenty-two.
Bill number ninety-one twenty-two, an ordinance concerning Sherwood Forest Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just have Lori Blair-Klasmyer all the way at the end of the table. Ninety-one twenty-two obligates the county to levy a special community benefit assessment against the Sherwood Forest Special Community Benefit District to repay a one-million-dollar loan from First Citizen Bank to the Sherwood Forest Club to improve tennis, the tennis court and clubhouse. The loan has an eleven-year turn, eleven-year term, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble talking, and any cost to the county, any cost the county incurs through administering it, its payment will be offset by an administrative fee collected at the time of taxation, the loan is not backed by the full faith and credit of the county, we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the council? Seeing none. We'll now open the public hearing on bill number ninety-one twenty-two. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through our online forum from members of the public?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll now hear testimony from individuals who sign up ahead of time, is there anyone in the audience who is here to discuss bill ninety-one twenty-two? Seeing none, the public hearing on bill ninety-one twenty-two is now closed, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number ninety-one twenty-two.
Bill number ninety-one twenty-two, an ordinance concerning Sherwood Forest Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number ninety-one twenty-two.
Mr. Volkey. Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, bill number ninety-one twenty-two has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number ninety-two twenty-two.
Bill number ninety-two twenty-two, an ordinance concerning zoning, critical area overlay, RCA uses, nurseries with landscaping, and plant sales.
Ms. Fiedler?
It's time.
I am accurate, this is your bill, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five, and I, I have to work on my poker face, clearly I showed my cards there. No, this is a cleanup to bill fifty-seven twenty-two, we discussed this bill in the work sess, work session, just very quickly, this is a follow-up to fifty-seven twenty-two, there was a contingent, I call it a contingency clause, probably not the technical term or legal term, but it said we had to wait for the Critical Area Commission to look at the RCA section of that bill, make a recommendation, and the council could choose to adopt or not adopt, and this is the language from that recommendation.
Any questions from the council, the administration, Mr. Barron, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have Lynn Miller from Office of Planning and Zoning with us for any questions, administration appreciated the discussion of the work session, council working with us, we have no opposition to the bill.
All right, bill ninety-two twenty-two, we will now open the public to bill ninety-two twenty-two, Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through our online forum for bill ninety-two twenty-two?
We did not receive anything, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to bill ninety-two twenty-two? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on bill number ninety-two twenty-two is now closed, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number ninety-two twenty-two.
Bill number ninety-two twenty-two, an ordinance concerning zoning, critical area overlay, RCA uses, nurseries with landscaping, and plant sales.
Any further discussion from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five, Ms. Klasmyer, we spoke today, just for some clarification, there was some concern that came from members of the community that if, if there was a property that had a nursery with landscaping and plant sales, half in the RCA, half not, that they could do thirty percent in the out-of RCA and fifteen percent in the in RCA, but that is not possible because that would go beyond the threshold in the underlying zone, can you just confirm?
Sure, that is correct, that is correct, the overall is thirty percent of the lot, or one acre, whichever is less, and of that thirty percent or one acre, only fifteen percent, or I think it's twenty thousand square feet, can be in the RCA, so it's not adding them together, it's limiting how much of the thirty percent can be in the RCA, RCA, thank you.
Seeing no lights, no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call, please call the roll call on bill number ninety-two twenty-two.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, bill number ninety-two twenty-two has been passed.
All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number ninety-three twenty-two.
Bill number ninety-three twenty-two, an ordinance concerning Board of Appeals, Notice of Zoning Appeals, Property Address.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District Five, this is a pretty simple bill, it just updates what is required when somebody applies for a Board of Appeals case, takes the county council, council manic, council manic districts out of it, so that there is no confusion on who should be involved in the appeals process.
Mr. Barron?
Again, Lori Blair-Klasmyer from the Office of Law is here all the way over there, must be me, again, no, discussed at the work session, no objections.
Any other comments from the council? We will now open the public hearing on bill number ninety-three twenty-two. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through our online forum from members of the public?
We did not receive anything, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience who would like to speak for or against ninety-three twenty-two? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on bill number ninety-three twenty-two is now closed, Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number ninety-three twenty-two.
Bill number ninety-three twenty-two, an ordinance concerning Board of Appeals, Notice of Zoning Appeals, Property Address.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I have to say this, my aide Pam Scarborough has done an incredible job of trying to describe and explain the difference between the Board of Appeals and the county council, just for the record, the fifth district calls this the Pam Scarborough Cleanup Bill, that is all, thank you.
And, you know, and I'll sort of end with these comments, I, I do think it's important, because, you know, we often get emailed or text in reference to Board of Appeal cases, certainly, and I'm assuming the other council members are similar, we certainly try our best and, and do our best to stay away from involving ourselves in those decisions, that's a completely, we remove ourselves in that process, and so by clearing up any confusion about, you know, folks who they need to contact, will certainly help in, in making sure the lines are drawn neatly and clearly, and so thank you for sort of, you know, getting rid of that confusion that was out there on the public domain. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number ninety-three twenty-two.
Mr. Volkey. Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, bill number ninety-three twenty-two has been passed.
Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? All right, so just so you all are aware, tomorrow is the gubernatorial inauguration in Annapolis, so a lot of the streets around this building will be closed, so please plan accordingly if you're coming in, into town, and again, congratulations to the incoming governor, Governor Wes Moore, when he's sworn in tomorrow. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the county council is adjourned until seven PM on February sixth, twenty-twenty-three.